Good evening, everybody. Today is Tuesday, September 7th, and the time is 6:30 PM, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. First item of business is our consent agenda. The... Oh, actually first, I think before we get into that, just as a reminder, because with the new guidance for remote meetings, we're all supposed to not be on mute. Everyone's supposed to be unmuted the whole time, I guess unless you have massive problems with your audio that's causing problems, with the exception of Alex because he's in and out. Remember to do that. And, alright, so now we can go ahead. Just wanted to remind you. Thank you, Stephanie, for reminding that because I had forgotten. And Jacqueline will need you to do roll call and just come off mute when we do votes.
Okay.
Alright. Thank you. Alright, first up is the minutes from August 24th, 2021. Has everyone had a chance to read them and look at them? Yeah, alright. Any changes or comments or...
I'll make... Go ahead. I was gonna say I'd make the motion to approve the minutes.
Excellent. Can I have a second?
All second.
Okay, Jackie?
Okay, Ms. Pelletier?
Hi.
Ms. Shudak?
Hi.
Ms. Mallett?
Hi.
Ms. Bartos?
Hi.
Ms. Parent?
Did you guys hear Stephanie?
I did not.
I didn't say anything. For some reason, it just said Zoom was not responding, so I think I was just glitching.
Are you, yea or nay for the minutes?
Okay, thank you.
Alright, next up is... I'm trying to flip back and forth between these here, sorry. You'd think by now I'd have a better grasp on this. Next is the group of warrants, 9, 11, 12, 14, 78, and 83. Any questions or anything on any of those warrants? If not, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve. Second?
All second.
Jackie?
And Ms. Pelletier?
Hi.
Ms. Shudak?
Hi.
Ms. Bartos?
Hi.
Ms. Mallett?
Hi.
Ms. Parent?
Hi.
Okay, next up, the introduction of the Director of Athletics, Steven.
Great. Happy to take that. Hi, everybody. Good evening. I'm really excited to announce... Or can we promote Brittany? Brittany Slate. So really excited to announce that we have found our Director of Athletics for the coming school year, Brittany Slate-Williams. We had a number of applicants and we tried some outside-of-the-box thinking around the Director of Athletics position. But when it came down to it, it really, I think, was in our best interest to have a person dedicated to Granby Athletics. I think Brittany knows already that she's got some big shoes to fill, that Ally worked really hard at it. Ally will still be involved a little bit. She's played a big role in the transition. But Brittany was working in the Southwick Schools for the last eight years, and she was their women's basketball coach for three years and had done an internship, per se, with their athletic director, who just so happens to be Ally's former assistant athletic director. So there was a connection there, and when she applied for the job, and I relied heavily on Ally, as you can imagine, for her input on this hire. And Brittany's been transitioning in for the past, I'd say, week and a half, two weeks. And I know some games started today, and she's had scrimmages and tournaments and COVID protocols that she's all had dumped on her lap, but we're trying to support her as she comes into the Granby schools. And I know Ally feels relieved to have someone, but like I said, Ally's still gonna play a role during the transition and certainly help out, I think, athletic directors around the region and parents. Certainly, Ally is synonymous with Granby sports, so I think that's their first contact. But I think she's doing a good job of starting to deflect them to Brittany. And like I said, we're really happy to have her, and I just wanted to take a minute and introduce her to all of you. I hope that she doesn't have to be on meetings as often as Ally did last year, but again, just wanted to make sure that you all could make a connection with Brittany and that the public... This is an opportunity for us to welcome her to the public as well.
I didn't know if I was able to unmute here. I appreciate it. Thank you so much. You know, I know Ally's shoes are really big to fill, but she has been a huge help so far. So has Jackie as well, so I'm definitely looking forward to the year. And it's good to see some names and faces on the committee, so I look forward to working with everybody. And hopefully, I don't have to do as much as Ally did with the whole COVID thing, but hopefully, we can keep that in the past. But again, thank you, and I look forward to the year.
Welcome, Brittany. We're so glad to have you. And I was actually at the girls' game. If I had known, I would have come over and introduced myself, but you...
Oh.
From afar, you kind of resemble Ally, so I thought you were Ally, and I was like, oh, leave her be, she's busy.
No, that's okay. Always come up to me. The more people I meet, the better. Now I can actually see some faces, which is good.
Excellent. Thank you.
So, and I did allude to Ally helping out, and Jackie is gonna help out as well with some of the arbiters, some of the behind-the-scenes work too. So really kind of taking a team approach, but Jen Bartos and I had spoken about a couple of different ideas, and in the end, just like I said earlier, having a person dedicated to Granby and really like a small team dedicated to Granby, I think, made the most sense for us, and excited to have Brittany on board.
Excellent. Very excited.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming on, Brittany. I hope that was painless for you, and the next time, I'm sure we'll have more questions for you.
Sounds good. No worries. I appreciate it.
Excellent. Okay, next up is visitors' comments. Any citizen wishing to speak before the committee must sign in with the administrative assistant prior to the opening of the regular session. The visitor will identify themselves by name and address and shall speak for no longer than three minutes. So do we have any public comments? Give it a second. Alright, not seeing any. We will go ahead and move along. I don't see Marcus for the student representative report, so we'll have to make sure that he's getting the emails and the links or invites. I'll touch base with him, make sure that he's getting them. Okay, continuing business. First up is the school enrollment dashboard. Should we promote Stacy?
Yes, please, if you don't mind.
Hi, Stacy.
Hi, everyone.
Are you able to display it on your screen, Jen?
Well, the one that I saw in the folder, I haven't looked for a few hours, was the one showed as of August 24th. So I don't know, is there a new one that's in the folder, or is it just the one that's in the school resources?
It should be just the one in the school resources. Correct, Stacy? There's... Yeah, this is the only version we've been working off of, so...
So just the... It's just... I just want to make sure I'm showing the right one. It's the school, under-school enrollment information, right? That's where we had it.
Yeah, and it should just be titled "Enrollment Dashboard."
Okay. Let me see if I can share my screen. See, because I am not good at this. Can you all see it? It's kind of funny looking, right?
Yes, we can see it.
That's the older one, Steven. It's not the current one.
I don't know why it did...
So that's... I don't... That's what I was saying. I don't know. Is there... Should we be going to a link or something, or is it supposed to be updated? So this shows the last edit was on August 24th, so I don't know where...
It should just update. Can you allow me to share my screen?
I can sure try.
Yeah, it should just be updating. Because it's a Google sheet.
What do I say? Ask to start... Ask to start video, change role, rename?
It said the co-host has stopped my video.
Jen, if you go into your Google Drive and where you're searching, type in "enrollment dashboard," and you'll see that Stacy edited at 5:23 PM tonight.
So not in the... Not in the...
Type... Use the search bar at the top and type in "enrollment dashboard."
Thank you.
We'll look into that, too.
Alright, let me see if I can make the size a little bit better here. Before I share it. We'll give it a shot. Alright, can you guys see it?
Yes. Yep. Great. So you'll see that the dashboard, at the top, we have our end-of-year, June 2021, end-of-year enrollment. And we saw a bit of a dip in July and a little bit more of a dip in August. When you look at the monthly enrollment breakdown and the monthly withdrawal breakdown, again, a reminder, those are specific to our previous month. So those are specific to the month of August. The cumulative information is in the tables to and charge to the right, where you'll start to see each month enrollment, withdrawals, and then total enrollment. I'm sorry, entries, withdrawals, and total enrollment. So we're down 12 students overall from the end of year last year. And that has to do with, you know, a number of factors. Some students return into their home district. You know, our graduating class plays a role into it as well. Like, how many students do we lose as graduates versus how many do we bring into our lower grades? All of those are factors.
Is there one... I don't know how to move around because it's so wide for the screen. I don't...
Jen, the three dots on the right-hand side, next to your letter J. You see those three dots? Click on that.
Yep.
And then you can change your screen to like 67%. I find works good for my screen, but... And then you'll be able to see more of the view at the same time.
I'm so glad we have a teacher on here to help me because I don't use it enough to... Well, I use it, but I'm looking at it for myself rather than trying to...
Now we can...
Is there anyone that we want to focus on right now, or is there any questions from the committee?
I just have a quick question. The withdrawal for vocational, are those for... Is that now Pathfinder? Because we were waiting until August for that?
It's Pathfinder and Smith Vocational.
Okay, great. This is really helpful. I love the way it's laid out. Thank you for doing this.
You're welcome.
And again, I think our hope is that having the same dashboard to look at every month allows us, as we all become more familiar with it, to focus in on certain things or pull, get certain, ask certain questions based on the information that's presented. I'm assuming some months, the conversations will be longer and more in-depth, and others might just be a check-in, so...
So I just want to make sure... So this is as of what date? This is August 1st to August 30th. So the entire month. The one for withdrawal for private in the ninth grade is one that has left in that time span of August 1 to August 30th?
Yes.
Okay, and the cumulative of that is reflected in a different graph? Like what the total number that has left is, yeah?
Yeah.
The chart to the right of that.
I just wanted to make sure that I'm understanding how we're doing this because it's easy to get to look at it like, oh, okay, we're talking about, you know, apples and oranges. So I just want to make sure. So we'd like to see that 708 come up some.
Yes. Ideally, we'd like to see it come up. I mean, ideally, we'd like to see it come up quite a bit, but yeah, I think every body helps for us.
And there's constant movement, right?
Yes. I think we'll find, you'll find that July, August, maybe some year September, and then, or probably the highest, and you might see a little bit of movement around the holidays and then a little bit movement towards the end of the year. But, you know, typically, as you get going through the year, you might see one or two or three here and there, but it should not be big waves.
Alright. Any other questions on these or graphs that you guys want to look at?
I'll set. Thank you.
And again...
Alright, I'm gonna go ahead and stop sharing my screen.
Available on the website for people, and you know, if people have questions that come up at any point, can always feel free to reach out to myself or Stacy, certainly.
Alright. Alright, next up is... What's next? Subcommittee dates. Oops. Sorry, I just had a little... I'm having a little technical difficulties here. So this was brought back from the last meeting, I think, and we wanted to talk about more about how we wanted to do the subcommittee. And our first one is supposed to be, I think it's the 21st, that's to be right. And I think we just wanted to talk about how we wanted to move forward with that. Is that how you all remember this agenda item?
Yeah, and I had said that I would reach, we'd reach out to MASC about some of the process that we had discussed last month, and we did. And really, they said, as long as the subcommittee meetings are posted and, you know, someone takes minutes and reports back, though the subcommittee meetings don't also need to be filmed live, even if the business meeting that they're a part of is live. So they did confirm that for us, and I think that was one of the struggles that we had last month of try to figure out, how do we do it? Was there breakout rooms or separate Zoom links? But that was some of the guidance, so one of the things we did talk about last month was potentially having the subcommittee meetings happen during the business meeting, but we have confirmed that they don't need to be streamed if we do go in that direction.
Alright, so that's good. So our first subcommittee will be next, the next meeting. And we just need to decide if we want to have the first one be the calendar group and just work on that one, all of us, or if we want to have two, and which two. But I definitely think we need to have the calendar one because we want to try to get some dates on that to kind of plan out the year, which is why we had talked about potentially having the second half of our meeting be focused on the calendar. And then once we kind of... I think how we had talked about it was, once we sort of shake it out, then the next time that we have a subcommittee meeting, that group that's on the calendar committee can go and kind of with what we, how we want it to be. But I'm certainly open to whatever you guys want to do for what you think for the 21st. Anybody?
I'm okay with that. Having... I mean, it would give us all an idea of what we're all looking for, and then we can go back and make a plan with it.
Unless, Adam, do you need that time for budget committee, budget subcommittee? Do you want us to... We could do a calendar and budget subcommittee for...
So that's what I was kind of thinking also because we're kind of... I know it's only September, but the months go by super fast.
So what do you guys think of that? Do both? Are you open to that, Adam, to have some time?
Yeah, certainly. So my thinking is to, right now, to start the FY '23 budget process on November 1st, give or take. So that first subcommittee meeting that we have for budget finance would be kind of drafted in the calendar from November through March, April, whatever town meeting is. So, yeah, so I don't mind, I don't mind that, but obviously, that plays into the calendar subcommittee, so I'm not sure how we would, how we want to go about that.
Right, because the calendar...
Go ahead, go ahead.
I was gonna say, the calendar subcommittee is Jen and I, who Jen's on budget.
So maybe what we do is we just take part of that calendar time and have Adam there, and we kind of work on that budget calendar and, you know, have it be it's two parts, but really, because I think this calendar piece is gonna be super important to lay out and make sure that we have, like we've talked about a number of times now, additional public forums, you know, meetings with teachers, meeting with staff, meeting with, you know, community members, like building all of that out. And that will play into how we want to see the overall calendar for the year.
Is there a way we could meet as a calendar altogether for a little bit and then break up into our second ones?
Sure. I think it's... The time is ours to do with what we want. So I think we could have the first part of the subcom... So the way I'm seeing it is we'll have a quick business meeting at the beginning, make sure there's nothing that, you know, comes up between now and then. You know, we need to vote on minutes and warrants and everything, and then break out to the subcommittee. And I would say we start with the full group of us talking about the calendar, fleshing it out, and then maybe 45 minutes or so after that, we could break up and then do, you know, this budget committee, and you guys, whoever's left, can still remain talking about the calendar. Thoughts?
Are we allowed to do that, though, if we have a forum?
Well, we're not voting on anything. It's discussion. So as I understand the rules, as long as there is no vote, we can have, because it's calendaring and scheduling, like how we want to lay out the year. That's what I understood when Tracy was talking about it and how we've done it in the past. So we could reach out again to Tracy and finalize that, but I thought that's how she had explained it, but I'm probably... Maybe I missed something.
Another thing, Adam, could draft the proposed budget calendar and share it out prior to that next meeting so people have a chance to take a look. And we could have that as part of the calendar meeting, maybe if you have it beforehand, if you think that would be helpful.
And Adam, if you want to try to schedule a subcommittee meeting before that, we can, you know, try to do that and get it posted. As long as it's posted, we can do that.
That's what I want to say. Like, we're gonna probably have more than one budget and finance subcommittee meeting per month.
Oh, of course, yeah.
Especially as we're going through the budget process. So, yeah, so I already have a draft calendar that I can send out. And maybe I can send that out, we can, you guys can all review it, and maybe we can just meet as a calendar committee at the next meeting, but incorporate the draft calendar, at least for the budget, and then we can schedule a subsequent budget and finance meeting, maybe separate from the school committee meeting after that meeting.
Okay.
If that works, if that works for anything, everybody, because again, I already have the calendar, a draft calendar, so...
Or the other meeting, the other committee meeting that we could do after we have the start of the calendar is the communications subcommittee. Is that you and I, Stephanie? We could meet to try to work on some of that stuff because we'll have a rough idea of some of the dates that they're talking about and sort of our plan of attack. So, you know, that way we don't have to use... Because budget, the budget committee is sort of a different animal. We can use that time if we need to for other things, but I think for this one, maybe we start it with, like we said, the group of us kind of shaking out what we want this calendar to incorporate, and then we'll break out that, so that it's the calendar committee group and then the communications group, and work it forward that way. And then Jill, you can sit in on whichever one that you want for that time. I think that that would be fine. Does that sound okay? Alright. Boy, we are cruising, cruising, cruising.
Aw, you had to say it, didn't you?
Alright, next is mask updates.
I think we can keep cruising. There's no update on the mask as of right now. No new guidance from the state right now regarding masks. And our policy has not changed, and the Board of Health's policy has not changed. Reports from both schools right now, our students have been very compliant with the mask mandate. Even students who kind of need a break or whatever, they've been great about it. So off to a good start in that department, and really, nothing new to report at this time.
I would like to keep this in living, sort of in continuing business because I do think as it gets closer to, you know, next week, or next meeting, it's closer to October 1st, there might be some discussion that we need to have because it's technically only until October 1st and that 80%, the elusive 80% of those discussions. So if you guys are all right with it and agree, I think we should keep it up there in continuing business, at least for the foreseeable future, just because I think there's, we should touch on it all the time.
I actually do have a follow-up question, so... Up to staff and asking them, you know, to working towards that 80%, is that something that we are doing as well? Or if they feel comfortable, it's not like a mandate in any way. It's our option.
See that Cheryl is on here. I have my meeting scheduled with Cheryl Thursday afternoon, and I anticipate that being something that we will be discussing, but it's not something we've done yet. And then same with students. Students are hard to gauge as well. But just looking at the town-wide numbers, again, not that it's a perfect indicator. We're still a ways away. I think the 12 to 19 group were just maybe scratching the 60% mark.
Okay. Is that 80%... It's cumulative for the district or cumulative for the building?
My understanding is the building.
Okay.
So...
That's good. Right, so like in East Meadow, you potentially could get there fast. You know what I mean? Like depending on where our staff population is coming from, like, you know, who knows? Either way. But actually, at the elementary, it doesn't even matter, right? That 80% is not for the middle, it's for the high, or for the elementary, it's for the high.
Yeah.
Answered my own question.
That's my understanding, and it's... There was a commissioner call last week, and, you know, you touched on a few things. you know, you touched on a few things, but a lot of the kind of final say was like, there's more to come. Like, we do anticipate they're going to be starting to track cases statewide again in schools, which three weeks ago, four weeks ago, we were told that was not going to happen. So again, similar to last year, some shifts as we start to move forward and feel like we understand the plan, there, there's shifts starting to happen already. So yeah, I, I think Jen's right, keeping it on the agenda makes sense. By the 21st, we're going to be, it's our last meeting technically as of right now, between then and October 1st, but we're in Granby, just looking at the vaccination numbers that we have available to us, we're still a little ways away in that twelve to nineteen, and it's, again, not a perfect indicator, but I think it's a data point that, you know, we, we can rely on a little bit, and I think once that number starts to look like eighty percent, then we have to imagine in our schools, we have to be close to that too, because that's not just our students, that's every youth, twelve to nineteen in Granby.
And we should mention that, you know, we just got the call that there's going to be a vaccination clinic, right? I don't remember the date, though. But I just remember I got the.
As part of my.
Oh, sorry, still your thunder?
No, that's okay. Um, the twenty-third, September, Thursday, September 23rd, from eleven AM to seven PM, they will be available. So we have inquired to them about, you know, do students need to have a parent present, and they do not, as long as they have a consent form signed beforehand, they could get the vaccination without the present, the, the presence of a parent. So so it'll run through the second half of the school day, it will be available, and then through seven PM that evening. And it's not just for students, it's for parents, it's for staff, community members. If there's folks from Belcher Town or South Hadley or wherever, it's just an opportunity, you know, and we hope for our, for our community that it's centrally located and easy to get to. And I know the last time we had it, the council on aging accessed it for some people, and so please feel free to spread that far and wide.
Excellent. Next up is the testing program.
Would you mind promoting Nancy for this?
Sure.
And I can start. So we, we have signed up for the routine COVID safety checks, which formerly were called the pool testing and the test and stay. We did not start off signing up for the symptomatic testing, but it's certainly something we can pursue. Right now, the process is,
Let it go.
The process is, it's a little clunky, to be honest. I think CIC, which is the vendor through the state, I think they mean well, and they're working really hard. I think the number I heard last week was something, two, two thousand schools, about eighty thousand students that they're trying to work with and find program coordinators for. That's the real next step for us. We're awaiting our PC, our program coordinator, which has not been assigned to Granby yet. But fortunately, Nancy and I were on a call with CIC last week, and not having that program coordinator is holding some things up, but we have, we have already been able to order supplies through them, so supplies are en route. It will just be a matter of, you know, when we get the coordinator and when they assign the test, the testing team, that would be on campus. Is Nancy not here?
She's there.
No, I'm here. I just wanted to make sure I let you finish.
Of course. So I just didn't see your name on screen, so I missed that, sorry.
That's okay.
I don't know if I, I'm sure I missed some things, but there's, and there's another call tomorrow at one o'clock with the state for, for the testing program. So they have been having weekly calls for that, which have been supportive and helpful and in other ways confusing, which has caused us to have to go back to them a few times, but I'm glad they're doing it. Again, I think I said last time, happy to have the state providing some support and resources. That was a really major hurdle for Granby last year. We just felt like a program like this really would outstrip our capacity. And having the support from the state and free of charge to school districts is certainly a welcome development from last year.
So Nancy, do you want me to present your PowerPoint, or?
I can. We also did a taping with Alex last week, so once we get that up, we're going to be getting that on our website and trying to share that out as well. So just so you know that that's there, but I can do that as well if you would like.
All right.
I hope we get that video. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Alex.
Yeah, I hope we get that video done by the end of the week.
Okay.
Can you have Nancy share her screen then?
Okay, I've gotta pull it up, so just bear with me one minute here.
Sure.
Well, she's calling it up. Again, thank you to Nancy. She held an information session last Wednesday morning that was open to any parents who had questions, and another one last Wednesday evening at six o'clock, opened to any parents who had questions about the testing program, and I feel, I was able to attend the evening one, and a parent who attended, I think, was able to get some questions answered, and really appreciate Nancy putting the time in to provide the information to our families around this, because, you know, I do think people have some questions that I hadn't thought of before, and it's helpful to have Nancy there and always ready to answer them.
Okay, so I'm going to be talking about the COVID-19 testing in schools. So we're going to be covering why we're testing, what our testing options are, what does that look like, as well as consents, and then answering any questions. So there's a couple reasons why we're looking to test. Important to help monitor the COVID-19 levels in schools and help reduce absences and lost instruction that allows students and staff to be able to stay in school. We're able to do the tests and get the results quickly. And then the tests are pretty quick and easy to perform, and they're free and open to anyone who's interested. And it provides an alternative for families. The vendor that the state's chosen this year for the testing, last year they had several, but this year they have decided to kind of hone it down to one, is CIC Health. They're actually based out of Massachusetts. They provide trained staff who come in and assist us in doing the testing and putting everything that together and getting it to a courier to bring to the labs, especially for the routine COVID safety checks, otherwise known as pool testing. Like we said, it's optional for students and staff, and folks can consent now or later. It's not all one or done. So if families decide, okay, I just want to give consent for one test, and then maybe I'll do two or three later, they can do that, or they can wait and kind of see what happens, and then hop in later. There's no set timeline. We're doing it kind of rolling enrollment.
Can I project there, Nancy, real quick? That's a really good point that Nancy makes, and I think if families are just getting the form that we sent home, which is the form that the state created, it does not appear that there is that option to choose one testing program, but we would prefer, if a family's interested in doing one and not the other, having them participate in the one that they want, rather than an all or nothing mentality. So the form that went home was created by the state. They really urge districts not to change it. But I think that's an important point that Nancy makes. If families, you know, are interested in doing test and stay and not the routine safety checks, we can accommodate that, whether it's attaching a note to their letter, reaching out to Nancy on the side, we're happy to work with families so that they feel comfortable participating in one or both that we're currently offering.
I also really appreciate that, because I've had a few families ask me that question, so.
We want to be able to make it user-friendly for everybody. We don't want to restrict anyone, and we want to encourage participation, and whatever that looks like, and we understand being parents ourselves, that this is really a, a big thing, especially it's being done at school, it's not being done at home, or with mom and dad at, like, let's say CBS or whatever that looks like. So we want to make sure that parents are able to make the best decisions for their family at specific times.
Thank you.
So like we discussed before, the testing is free, and it follows the state guidance through the Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and the Department of Public Health. I'm gonna just move you guys up. So there are three different types of testing that Desi has approved for COVID. The first is symptomatic testing, then close contacts, which is part of the test and stay, and then as well as the routine COVID safety checks.
So close contacts and test and stay are the same thing?
Yes.
So you, you only had two on there, so can you go back a slice? What was the third one, then?
Um, I should have. I should have. Yeah, I should have put the routine COVID safety check. So
Okay, great.
There are three, but there's two here.
Okay, great, thanks.
So my error.
No, no, I just wanted to make sure I was understanding. That's all.
That's okay. So the current testing options that Granby's choosing at this time is the test and stay and the routine COVID safety checks. I will be going over all of these shortly, and then the potential testing options are the symptomatic testing. So for COVID-19 symptoms, again, this is per the state guidance. I'm going to try to minimize my screens, so you guys can see it here. The primary symptoms are a fever, chills, and shaking chills, difficulty breathing or shortness of breath, a new loss of taste or smell, and muscle aches or body aches. These are the primary symptoms that anybody, whether they're vaccinated or not, we would be sending out to get a PCR test right now, since we are not doing symptomatic testing. The other side, the combination symptoms, these are things that folks may have that need to be in combination with other symptoms, so a cough, a sore throat, if they're having nausea, vomiting, or diarrhea, a headache, fatigue, or nasal congestion with a runny nose. And again, not being related to anything such as allergies when they're in combination with other things. So if a student who's not vaccinated presents with these symptoms, we will send them out to get a PCR antigen test, and then they can return back as long as their test is negative, and they've had improvement in symptoms, or they have an alternative diagnosis. If a child who is vaccinated comes in, or a staff member, and they show with the primary symptoms, we're going to ask them to go and get a test as well. But if they come in just with a combination symptoms and not the primary, we're going to ask them to contact their primary care to see if they should be getting tested or not, and that provider will make the determination whether it's something just, you know, it's allergies, or it's a cold, it's not COVID, or, you know what, let's go get a test just to be on the safe side. And again, this is guidance that's come down from this state. They kind of shifted things this year where they're kind of doing the combination versus, you know, you need to have just a runny nose or just a cough. So it's kind of pulling things a little bit more together than prior.
Nancy, do you have questions at the end, or as we go through?
If you have questions as we're going through, you, we can do that as well, whatever works.
I just had a quick question with the symptoms.
Okay.
If you do, because just this was asked you a few times, say you present with a fever and one of the combination symptoms, and your PCR is negative, we still have our fever policy, though, so is that something that the student still go home because they have a fever, and they're, okay.
Yep. So let's say we're doing symptomatic testing, they have a fever, and they have, you know, let's say a sore throat, and their, their binax now comes back negative. Well, they need to be fever-free for twenty-four hours without fever-reducing medicine such as Motrin or Tylenol before they can come back. So same thing if they went and they got sent out with a sore throat, and let's say congestion or a cough, and they come back with strep, they're going to have to follow our other exclusion policies for strep, where they need to be on antibiotics for twenty-four hours before they can come back. So those alternative diagnoses still play an effect with all of this. So I know it kind of complicates everything, but we want also to make sure we're not passing around other things as well, viral or, you know, strep to, to our peers and to staff, so.
I appreciate you asking that, Stephanie, because I, it's, there's still other sicknesses in the world. You know, we're, we're understandably focused on COVID, but that's not the only illness that's out there, so it's a good reminder, you know, it should still be, if you're sick, don't come to school, not just if you're not COVID sick, you know?
Right.
I think the question still lies for some of that, though, is if you're sick, don't come to school, but are the ramifications then, obviously, the communication with the nurse, and checking what symptoms you then have to decide whether you need to test, or if it's just like a common cold?
Right. And again, if you check in with the nurse, and the nurse is like, you know, if it's, you know, there's other things going on, let's have you call your primary and have a discussion with them, let's stay home, see what they have to say. If they want you to get tested, let's go for it. Or if the doc is saying, you know what, I think it's just allergies, you know, you know, give them whatever they take for their allergy medicine, and then let's see how things go. So unfortunately, with the fall weather coming to shift, and then other things kind of brewing, this can get a little bit tricky, so we just ask parents for their patience as we're navigating this. Because unfortunately, especially in the last year, we've seen people who look like they have colds and test positive for COVID, and have seen a wide range of other things too. So unfortunately, it's not a one-stop shop, this is what it looks like, and then we're moving, you know, can do X, Y, and Z. So.
Thank you. I think it's tricky sometimes with that phrase test and stay, because certain symptoms, you're still going to go home, because there are those other things. So thank you for clarifying that, makes sense.
You're welcome. And test and stay, as I get in, you know, once I go through it some more, individuals have to be asymptomatic, meaning they cannot have any symptoms in order for that to occur, but I'll go through that and provide some more clarity.
All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome. So with our close contacts, the state is defining anyone who is within six feet of a COVID-positive individual indoors, and they need to be near them for at least fifteen minutes over a twenty-four hour period. And that's not like you just pass the person in the hallway for like less than a minute, walking down the hallway, that does not count. For those folks, the exposure time with that COVID-positive person either starts you know, two days prior to the onset of symptoms, or two days prior to the positive test if they have had no symptoms. And that can, that exposure still continues until that positive person has been isolated and is quarantining.
For this state definition, does it matter, matter if they have a mask on or not? Is that maskless?
It, it does matter, and I'm going to go over that shortly.
Okay.
So close contacts are exempt from testing and quarantining if they meet the following here. So if they're fully vaccinated and they're asymptomatic, meaning they're having no symptoms, they're not considered to, to need to get tested or quarantine. With that said, though, anybody on this list, if they're feeling like they do need to get a test and they want to follow through with that, we're not going to deny them that, but under the state protocols, this is what they're saying folks are exempt for. The other thing too, if they're in a classroom and they're, both individuals are masked, and as long as they're at least three feet apart, they don't need to quarantine or get tested. On buses, everyone has to be masked, that's per the federal requirement, so all individuals need to be masked, and when the windows are open, again, the state is saying they're exempt. And then anyone who's had COVID-19 in the last ninety days are exempt, as long as the individual is within that ninety days of their own onset of them being sick themselves, and they are, have recovered, and they have no COVID symptoms. So like I said before, those close contacts, that fifteen minutes has to occur within a twenty-four hour period, and it's not like when they're passing the hall and they're in transition, it's, you know, they're sitting next to someone for ten minutes without the mask on, they're within that three feet range, or within that six feet range, and other things are going on. So just so we're clear about that. Does anyone have any questions about this so far?
So really, in school, So really in school, the I'm, the way I'm understanding this is the really the only place that there would be potential close contacts is at lunch, no?
Potentially, yes. Yep.
Because i- if everyone's masked in the in the school for classrooms, then that should be fine. Outside, it doesn't matter. So it's really, and now if they're eating lunch outside, is that okay? That would be a close contact? Okay.
No, yeah, they they would be okay because they're outside, the air is moving. Really, this stuff really pertains with the the classroom close contacts is they're indoors.
Okay. But to clarify, breakfast and lunch snacks, breakfast and snacks, they are doing that in the classrooms or not? Depends on the classroom, maybe?
I think they're doing snack, if I'm not mistaken, in the cafeteria at East Meadow. I don't know if Bill is on, but I'm pretty sure they've been doing that because I remember seeing them coming in into the cafeteria last week. And at the high school, their snack is their break is in the cafeteria or they go outdoors where they're under the supervision of school staff.
We can confer. I do see Bill is on and I know they're having lunch in the cafeteria. And I've seen them in the cafeteria for snack, but I don't know that that's 100% that they're in the cafeteria for snack.
He said they, um, he said some are in the classroom and some are having the choice of going outside or using the cafeteria.
I just promoted Bill.
Okay.
Just so we can be part of the discussion if we have any other questions.
Okay.
Should we promote Ally too, if she's on for anything for the high school or no?
You guys just missed talking.
It wasn't really a question per se that Bill needed to answer, but I know Jen, you had mentioned that they were outside or in the cafeteria for those times. And I feel like one of my, like I've heard that there might be something in the classroom every now and then. So.
Well, if we have questions, now we've got them both up there.
So do you want them to con- confirm what they're doing right now?
I'm just putting it out there that there is that potential. It already, Bill already stated it. I'm fine.
Okay. Okay.
I can't hear you, Bill.
Yeah, sorry. It took me a little while to get connected.
I can hear you now. Thank you.
All right. Let me know if you have any questions.
Great. Thank you. Go ahead, Nancy.
Okay. So for the test and stay, this is normally when folks are getting tested for seven days from the date of their exposure in school. So close contacts, so anybody who's not exempt on the list that we just went over can remain in school and they don't need to quarantine as long as they're asymptomatic, having no symptoms. They're wearing their mask in school at all times other than when eating and drinking and they're at least maintaining that three feet from other people to the extent feasible, if not more. They're taking that rapid antigen test, the binax now in school every day and they receive a negative result. So on the days that include weekends or holidays, the state is recommending that folks quarantine. And as long as they remain asymptomatic, they need to get tested at school immediately. And as long as they're negative, they continue, they can continue to be in school. And then, and another part of this process is they need to be actively monitoring symptoms from through day 14 of their exposure and then self-isolating at home if symptoms develop. So on day eight, as long as they are, you know, they're continuing to be asymptomatic, they've tested negative the last seven days with the binax now. They can continue to remain in school and continue that self-monitoring through the 14 days and can continue to remain there as long as no symptoms. So if they end up, the individual who's designated as a close contact develops symptoms at any time during the test and stay, they have to follow the protocols for symptomatic individuals. And then if they test positive at any time, then they follow the protocols for the positive cases. And then again, as part of the test and stay, the state is strongly recommending that those individuals outside of the school setting still quarantine. So for tho- those families who decline the in-school testing, the testing and staying, they need to quarantine for at least seven days from the date of exposure. And they can return on day eight as long as they continue to remain to have no symptoms. They have a negative PCR or rapid antigen test on day five or later and it's negative. And then they again have to continue to monitor themselves through day 14. And then if they develop symptoms, they need to isolate. And as we discussed before, if they develop any symptoms during that time, they're gonna follow the protocols for symptomatic individuals. And then if they test positive, then they're gonna follow that protocol. And with those different things with the symptoms and the COVID positive, their timelines for when they may return to school may shift depending on what's happening, just so that you're aware. So for those individuals who do not want to do any testing at all, they don't want to test in school, they don't want to test in home. They have to quarantine for at least 10 days from the date of exposure. They can return on day 11 as long as they've had no symptoms up to that point and they continue monitoring themselves through that 14 days. And again, quarantining if they develop any symptoms. And then again, following the symptomatic protocol if they develop symptoms or if they're positive, following the COVID positive. So for the routine COVID safety checks, which last year the state was calling pool testing, is when they take a bunch of samples from different people and they combine them together. And they use those samples in a collection and they test it against a PCR test to see if there's any detection of the COVID-19. Testing for all consenting students and staff members takes place normally once a week. So normally the pool is no bigger than 10 samples. So 10, only takes up to 10 people. Pools can be smaller than that. But it's not like we can test 50 people in one pool. It's a max of 10. And so when you test that pool and it's negative, then those individuals are presumed negative and they all can stay in school. However, if there is a positive test, those individuals are gonna get retested with a rapid antigen test. So if they're asymptomatic, they can return to school until they identify a positive individual and those individuals in that group should be wearing masks until that person has been identified. And then symptomatic members of that group should be staying home and following the protocols. One thing I would like to note is for Granby, we have opted to do the saliva testing instead of the nasal swaps for the routine COVID safety check. So instead of kids needing to swap themselves twice, they spit into like a small container. And what the lab does is it takes a part of that saliva sample and combines it with the other members of that pool, that group, up to nine other samples with that person, and they test it against the PCR. And then if that P, if that group comes back positive, the other part of the sample that they took, they will test individually to figure out who is the positive in that test. So kids aren't having to spit or swap themselves again. And the turnaround for that is the max is about 24 hours. So we felt like that was a less invasive way for kids to participate in staff, to participate in the testing without sticking something up their nose and having to do it more than once a a week if there's a positive identified in the pool. So potential testing in the future is symptomatic testing. One thing that we want to highly, highly, you know, inform families is this isn't a way for families to be testing their kids if their kid is sick and they're sending them into school. If the kids are sick, we want them to stay home. It's really important that they're not coming in because if they do have COVID and they wait to come see the nurse, let's say until 11 o'clock, they've now kind of exposed everyone else in the building. So if the kids are sick, we want them to stay home. If a student is fine and around 11 o'clock, they develop symptoms, that's when testing would be be being performed. And it would be for vaccinated and unvaccinated individuals. Again, this is a potential testing for the future, but we want you to be aware of what this involves. So for unvaccinated individuals in any close contacts, if we find that they're having symptoms, we're gonna have them quarantine and then get tested or have an alternative diagnosis. So if they had anything on that, the the two sides of the chart that I showed you with the symptoms, the one that was in bold and then the combination symptoms, that's what they're gonna need to do. For those individuals who are vaccinated, who are not identified as close contacts, if they have any of those symptoms that were bold as primary symptoms, the fever, the loss of taste and smell, the chills, all of those things, they're gonna quarantine if they are having those symptoms and get a test done. If they're having just the combination symptoms on the other side, then we're gonna ask them to contact their primary care provider to find out if they need to be further evaluated and have a COVID test. So any students who are having symptoms and they've been tested, they can come back to school as long as they've had a negative PCR and they're not deemed to close contact. Or if they have an alternative diagnosis, whether they have the flu or strep. And as long as their symptoms are approved and they've been fever free without, for 24 hours without taking fever reducing meds such as Motrin or Tylenol, they can come back. If they're symptomatic and they're considered a close contact and they're not exempt, they have to follow up with our protocol and get a negative test before they can stay. Or they can follow the test and stay protocol. For those individuals who test positive for COVID, they have to quarantine for at least 10 days from either, again, those that symptom onset or if they have a positive PCR or antigen test if they're not having symptoms. So as long as they've been fever free for 24 hours without fever reducing meds and they are having improvement in symptoms, they can come back on day 11. If things are going on where they're not improving, some other things are happening and they're getting up to day nine, day 10 and they're not looking great, the local Board of Health or the State Contact and Tracing Collaborative may decide they're gonna push their timeline out a little bit so they can get, you know, things better under control and then they can come in return. One thing I would like you guys to know is when the state, state reports come in for anybody who's taken a COVID test, whether it's positive or negative, when they come in, the state will determine if the report should go to the local Board of Health or the State Contact and Tracing Collaborative will follow up. So sometimes folks may be hearing from like the Granby Board of Health if they live in town or they may be hearing from the state. So, you know, if they're hearing from two different people, we just want them to be informed that that's a possibility depending on what's going on. And then part of folks return to school, they do not need to have a test prior to returning. They can return as long as they meet that criteria or if things are, you know, abnormal from the the 10 days based off their local Board of Health or the state. So for consents, like Steve said, the state form, it, you know, the consent form this was sent out is from the state. They don't provide that option of choosing one of the three, two of the three or all three. So again, if we have families that really would like to have an option, they can just shoot me an email or write it on the form and let us know what they would like to do. Again, it's a yes or no option on the form and it's optional. So if families decide, I'm gonna wait and see, that's okay. Later on, they can give us such, you know, a decision if they change their mind. And then again, they can shoot us an email or send in written choices and we will respect that and include that.
Nancy, do you happen to have the the numbers that you've received back?
I have not totaled them up because they keep coming in at all directions. But I'm guessing right now we have at least 50 between students and staff from both buildings. So we're slowly getting there. Things are coming in. You know, today I think I had about seven or eight between staff and students at both buildings. So it's coming in surely, slowly but surely. And the consent form is also on the Health Services main webpage as well as all of the state guidance. So if families want to reference that and see, you know, exactly what's in, that entails, it's all there. And then once we get the video from Alex, we'll be putting that up as well.
And again, I know Mia, Nancy, I believe she mentioned it earlier too, but it's an opt-in program. So if people don't respond, they're not part of the program automatically. They must actually opt in to be a part of it.
So currently right now, and again, like Steven said, this is kind of in the works. The state keeps changing things. So we expect some changes coming on the home front with this. Per Desi, at this time, students are marked absent for an, absent for any illness. But they can work towards attendance recovery and I've included the link on the PowerPoint for families to access. It is also on the district main page on the dropdown on the right side. I think currently right now it's posted under the high school. I've also included the online attendance form. So regardless if their kid, their student is out for, you know, they eight days as a close contact or 10 days or whatever it is, we would like families to please complete the attendance form each day. If they're at the high school using this link, this is also on the district main page on the right side dropdown. And then at this point, for East Meadow, please call the school. We are in the process of creating an online attendance form, but really important so that we know that students are doing well. We know that they're contin-, you know, they're continuing to be out due to illness. So we can help make sure that we're putting plans in place as well to help students recover their academics and their time on learning while they're home.
The one question I have about the absence piece, like for, is like participation grades. So that needs, I think, needs to be rethought because there's potential if you're a close contact or something, even if you're, you you could end up missing a bunch of school. And then your participation grade is gonna suffer from that. And in some instances, those grades are, can be up to 10% of your your grade. So, you know, I know you can, you can recover your absences to make up that you weren't there, but that's not gonna help you with your teacher. So how are we? What are we doing to look at that?
I guess, big picture, I guess I have my own issues about participation grades, but.
They're in most of the syllabi. So that's something to be worked out later on.
Yep. But for a student who's absent, it can't be held against them. They can't lose participation because they have to be out of school. So those students who are making up their work and in communication with their teachers should have no impact.
And then they'll, of course, will be, you know, like if you're missing standardized tests and all of that, you know, if you're out for 10 days or, you know, I just, I know that it's not an option and I get it, but if you miss 10 days, if you have to miss 10 days more than once, that's a big chunk of your time. And there's the potential if you're, you know, that you could be out for 30, 40 days if you have to go out for more, you know, more than once. So I worry about.
I think that's our responsibility if a student was in that situation to look at all the options we have available to us, whether it's a home hospitalization tutoring. Already at the junior, senior high school, I know they're offering tutoring two days a week. So any student who is home on quarantine or isolation is being strongly encouraged to attend that tutoring so that they have access to licensed teachers to support them with any work that they are doing. But yeah, I think in those scenarios, we're gonna, I mean, first, we're gonna hope that it's a very small number of students who are in that situation. But I do think, yeah, that that is a possibility. And we need to think creatively about how those students can still access their education.
So they, if they're on quarantine, even if they're asymptomatic and feel well enough, they can't go into Google Classroom because there's no remote option, right? So they just have to sit home and do nothing?
They can do the work in the Google Classroom, but they wouldn't have the live session. Now, the state has started to say that they would allow if a student could Now, the state has started to say that they would allow if a student could be online or live with their teacher for at least half the day, then it could count as them being present. But that's a curve ball that was just thrown out there in the past two weeks or so. And I think a district like Granby is going to have a really hard time making that work. I know some other bigger districts are able to use some of the stimulus funding. I know one large district that essentially created a virtual school, complete with teachers and administrators, that those students who are remote could access at least support throughout the day. But, you know, for us, that's a significant ask. And I don't, that's another thing that certainly talked to Cheryl about. But, you know, I think that's asking an awful lot of the teachers as well. So it's something that we're just getting information on. So there might be some options and opportunities down the road. But it puts us in a really difficult position.
Thanks. Sorry, Nancy, go ahead.
That's okay. Does anyone have any other questions about the absences right now?
I have a quick question about test and stay, which pertains, I guess, to absences. So the difference, if you opt in, you don't test until day seven? Is that what?
No, you test day one through day seven. And then as long as you're asymptomatic and continue to test negative, then you stop testing on day eight and you continue through the 14, the rest of the 14 days monitoring yourself, but you can remain in school. The state is saying that they're finding through other research studies that this is equivalent to quarantining the students at school by doing the testing and making sure they're wearing their masks. And as long as they're asymptomatic, so that would, that's the option that they're providing. And the testing would be an antigen test, the binax now. That's, you get results within 15 minutes. So it's pretty quick. They do it first thing when they come in the building. They're negative, great, you're not having symptoms, move on, you know, move on to your first class or, you know, go to your classroom.
That would be first seven days, they'd get a test every day?
Yes, yep, yep.
And is that also the antigen through the saliva?
No, so the first, the, both of those are done with a PCR. So like I said, they'll take that grouping of how many people we decide to put in the pool. If it's 10, it's 10. They'll test that group of 10 against a PCR. If it's negative, great, go on your way. If there's a positive at all, they're going to take that second sample from the one that everyone spit in individually and they'll test those with PCRs to see where the positive is. And then we can isolate that, that particular individual and take the next steps. And everyone else who's negative stays.
But that's, but for the test and stay, when they're testing for seven days in a row, is that saliva or is that nose?
That's the nose. We don't have an option for saliva for that one.
Double checking. Yep, I just want to, thank you.
You're welcome. You guys are asking good questions, so I appreciate that.
You can continue, I'm all set.
Okay, so there's a video here. I'm not going to play it because it's kind of lengthy. But at your leisure, again, you can check on the PowerPoint separately. And then once we have everything all ready to go, it'll be on our district website. It's just a breakdown of DESI's version of everything, you know, animated. Again, if anyone has any questions, you can contact myself or Stephen. You know, it's important, regardless of how silly you think the question is, we want people to ask. That's why we're here. It's, we feel like it's very important for parents to be able to make an informed decision. And if we can help in any way through that process, we will. And then, thank you. I know this is kind of time consuming. It's a lot of information. And as things continue to change and shift, we will do our best to make sure that we're informing families. So thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Nancy.
All right. Next, any other questions or anything about the testing or the COVID protocols at all?
I guess my question would be, is it something that you would like to keep on the agenda for a couple more meetings? Just as we get more information and we hopefully get assigned our coordinator in the next couple of weeks? Or would you like me to just put it back on the agenda when we have an update?
I don't know. What do you guys think? I can go either way. You know, if there's nothing new, then we can just gloss over it. Or you could keep us updated in your superintendent's report where we're at with stuff. You know, because I feel like the first couple of weeks will be interesting to see how it goes. So I don't know, thoughts? What do you all think on the agenda for next time or just update from superintendent's report?
I think just an update would go unless there's a major change, but yeah, an update.
I was going to say the same, an update in the superintendent's report would be good.
Fine, me.
Are you okay with that, Stephen?
Yeah, of course.
Excellent. All right, new business is Policy J.
So we've seen Policy J before and then we pulled it back to Subcommittee. We did meet on it, got some clarity on a couple of things. And then confirmed with Tracy and our attorneys that everything, I think it's still highlighted, everything in green was acceptable. Everything in yellow had been previously approved. And I think we removed the one thing that was in red because it was part of Mass General Law and needed to be included. I don't know if I missed anything, Jill and Audrey, but...
So is this considered our second read and we want to vote? Or do we want to, does everyone want more time to look it over? And we can vote on it next time? Policy, what were you thinking?
I'm okay with it.
It was technically our second read, right? So we can vote on it. I'm just wondering if everyone's had a chance to digest it, if there's anything else? Or do you want to go ahead and vote on it?
Yeah, to your point, Jen, I think, you know, there was nothing changed. Once we brought it back to Subcommittee, we just got some questions about it answered. So I suppose you're right, technically it is a second read.
So we don't have vote on the agenda, so I don't know if that means we can't or if we are still okay.
I don't think there's any harm in pushing it back either, but...
Well, then why don't we do this? We'll put it on the agenda for under continuing business and do Policy J second read and vote for next time. And that'll be part of our quick business meeting part at the top. And everyone just go through and make sure you don't have any questions and really look at it. And then we'll have that be our second read and vote next time. Does that sound okay?
Yes, thank you.
Great.
All right. And with that, we're up to your superintendent's report.
Great. So obviously, school started last week for grades one through 12 and today for pre-K and kindergarten. Great to have students back in the building, right? I think we talked a lot last year about how the building's felt without everybody in it. And it's just nice to have everyone on campus and, you know, out at recess and in the halls. Junior, senior high school had their first fire drill even today. So it seems like, you know, just like a regular school day, school year with, of course, the addition of masks. But so off to a good start. Appreciate, Jen came to convocation. She was able to come. She said a few words to open. I think we got things kicked off on a really positive note. We had everybody at the East Meadow Gym. And I appreciate the faculty and staff bearing with me. I kind of, I gave them all assigned seating so that they were connecting with random people throughout the morning. And we had a presenter, Jeff Parati from DESI. So it was a really good start and I think some real positive themes emerged from that. And we've gotten some good feedback. So excited to have everyone back and now the work is right, maintaining that. And it's a long, it's a long haul, but we're, we're looking forward to it. And I appreciate all the work the teachers have done to get prepared and be ready to welcome our students back. And of course, the leadership team as well. Wanted to remind junior, senior high school parents that Parents Night is Thursday, September 16th. That is 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Also, this was in the RAM report last week, but the junior, senior high school picture day is this Thursday, September 9th. So if you have questions about that, you can certainly reach out to the main office. And then senior pictures will be held on September 23rd and 24th. It's through a company called Prestige. Whether you use them or not is your option, is the seniors' option. But they are going to be on campus the 23rd and 24th for senior photos. Wanted to give another follow-up update around the Acceleration Academy that started in August. There are still a few more weeks left. They will resume this week, this Thursday. And then they meet the rest of the Thursdays in, in September. Then they meet the 6th, the 13th and 23rd of October, and then the 3rd, 10th and 17th of November. And they are already talking about their next 10-week acceleration program. So if people are interested in that or have questions, they can certainly reach out to Mrs. Jordan. The East Meadow Parents Night is Wednesday, September 15th. Mr. Latoy sent out an email to his staff today trying to finalize some details because it's been run in a couple of different ways. So that will begin between 5:45 and 6:00. How they respond to that will depend on what time it starts. But that is next Wednesday, so I would stay tuned for specifics in this week's update. Also want to remind people that our Collaborative SOAR program is up and running again after school at East Meadow. You can contact Jen Silva. She's the coordinator for the program. And it is j silva at collaborative.org if you are interested in that program. We're also starting up our before, before-school care program for students at East Meadow. So East Meadow is available if you're part of that program. Students can be dropped off as early as 7:15. You do need to fill out the paperwork and, but you can reach out to Ms. Latoy or the main office if you have questions about that. And then finally, this Friday, September 10th, because the anniversary of September 11th is a Saturday, we will be observing a moment of peaceful, peaceful reflection at 8:46. Is the 20th anniversary of September 11th is upon us. So that will happen in both schools this Friday at 8:46. Any questions? I feel like I always rush through it because I have my list and I want to get through it. But if there's any questions on any of that, I'm happy to try to answer them.
All set.
Great. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, next up is Adam.
Uh, yeah, just a couple. I'll be, I'll be pretty quick. Still closing out FY '21. Still got a few more weeks of that. The report is due October 1st, I believe it is. So just working through, cleaning that up and reconciling with the town and making sure our books obviously match what they have. And then we will file the report. FY '22, that's, that's all well, we're off. We'll start probably in October. And we could talk about this in Subcommittee, how we want to report out during school committee meetings on FY '22 finances. But we can talk about that in Subcommittee. Tomorrow, we're going to meet to finalize the draft RFP for the kitchen at the high school. We used the roof RFP. Most of that language in air was relevant to what we needed for the kitchen. So myself, Stephen and John Sullivan have been working on that. So we're going to have a finalized draft tomorrow. And the plan is to then send it to the town for, you know, their review and let us know if there's any information that we're missing or we need. And then hopefully we will get that posted within the next week or two so we can start that process of starting the renovation for the kitchen. Our custodians, John and Pat, did an awesome job getting the schools ready. You know, there was a lot of work. We were still one custodian short all summer. But they, they did a great job getting the schools ready. Now they're focusing on getting fields ready for the start of fall athletics. So they've been working really hard and doing a great job. And I always feel like they sometimes might go unnoticed. So I just like to recognize them because they are doing some great work behind the scenes. Any questions, concerns, comments?
All right, Jill?
September 29th, that Wednesday, that's the next meeting.
All right, so I'll try to remember to not ask you the next time and it'll be the time after that. I just feel like I just want to...
You can't, yeah, not, yeah, not the 21st when we meet, but in October, I'll have something for you.
You know I'll forget and I'll ask you anyway because it's on the chat.
Yeah, it's fine. I'll have the same answer.
All right, perfect. Well, that's an easy one then. Is there anything else? We have a few items to bring forward for the agenda, but I don't think we have any new business to bring up for the next agenda. So the next meeting will be a quick business meeting. And then we'll do the breakouts for the subcommittees. And I believe, just so we'll have the agenda correct, and Jacqueline will send it to us. But we'll have all of us talk about committees, a calendar, sorry. And then we'll break out after that and we'll have some communication one. Is that what we're still calling it, communication? Yeah, yeah, all right.
Quick question. In our resources folder, can we do an update to the school committee dates to have those new dates that we agreed upon in there too?
I think it's just one, the December 14th instead of the...
Yes.
Yeah.
It's three times in November and only once in December.
Right, right.
And I'm pretty sure I added the new, I don't want to call it the wrong thing, in the resources, I added in the new Stacy enrollment dashboard.
Oh, awesome.
Oh, thank you.
So we can just get rid of the old one.
Okay, if there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, actually, real quick, Jen, one thing, I don't know if this is even the right time, but to, for continual, continual visit, can we put in, maybe not at the next meeting to have business, but something, some sort of update for the capacity committee? I feel like we did that and then really haven't heard from it since.
We haven't met.
Okay, well then never mind.
We met during the summer and kind of did. But yeah, so it wouldn't be our next meeting, but probably the one after, we have not met.
Perfect. It was on my radar. All right, thank you. And never mind, I'll make a motion to adjourn then.
We'll put it on when we do.
Perfect.
Second?
Oh, second.
All right, Jackie, well, do we need to have a roll call for it? Yeah, we need to do it. So can you do a roll call for us to adjourn?
Ms. Peltier?
Aye.
Ms. Shuduck?
Aye.
Ms. Bartos?
Aye.
Ms. Mollup?
Aye.
Ms. Parent?
Aye.
All right, everybody. Have a great night.